Okay, let me double check it's recording yeah. So hi everyone, I'm making another video again just to further um give you provide more evidence and today we're actually going to um I'm gonna show you pretty much what I had um you know when I had filed we're gonna examine pretty much the United States Department of Education so you can even see for yourself how the United States Department handled this situation if you don't know what I'm talking about please go watch the videos in my playlist um starting from the beginning and you'll get a clear understanding of what all is going on and so let's examine the United States Department of Education so like I said after um you know they concluded the investigation at Liberty University um I then made sure to reach out the United States Department so I called them and I could tell that the first person who I whom I spoke with um you know she sound like she was a woman of color and I was so relieved to finally maybe have someone to um connect with and so she was really great I mean she even gave me her number and she said that she um she would look in she would um pretty much reach back out to make sure I got in contact with the right individual so um she didn't forward me to whoever I needed to and then that's how that process got started okay and then eventually I would have to fill out a a like a document online a form to start the process you know stating my claim and then from there I would submit the same the same letter that I um wrote for Liberty University like I said this case is ready to go I have all the evidence and more evidence too you know um to show you right and and like I said videos but um anyway focusing on the United States Department of Education and their involvement now and let's highlight you know how they also um purposefully dropped the ball okay so let's let's continue so um now pretty much what I um I have sent her all of that information on top of um cuz she my she had asked for at some point in time my attorney had reached out to me and this is what pretty much she had they had asked for okay so I'm gonna show you now so this was back in like May now so this is what she's she's asking for she's like hello Ashley thank you for your signed consent form additional information you forward to my email on that day we are in the process of evaluating your complaint please provide the following information by that time otherwise your complaint will be dismissed okay provide so I've never spoke to this person on the phone and even when I tried to reach out to this person they never called me back okay and I'm gonna show you the conclusion of this whole entire thing that started back in um like I said um like April and you know how it's just an ongoing thing with like deadlines okay so I responded back to this and pretty much here are my attachments again to you know just submitting even more evidence cuz like I said I have nothing but evidence and I pretty much break give her the breakdown okay so I say hello thank you for reaching out and for updating me um regarding the process evaluating my complaint please find attached a copy of the letter I filed with Liberty University da 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 it that's number one and I even have it like that two the investigations are going it concluded on April ninth two thousand twenty four after I received an email from that person I receive this email at that time I will forward you the email highlighting the outcome following this message and also include a screenshot of the email in the attachment this was the only correspondence to mind you this person was the investigation officer and like I said I spoke to this person this person even noticed that the professor gave me incorrect instructions and was supposed to talk to the professor about that he never addressed that right and so um continuing on so I said I attempted to reach out to you know that person once I received you know and I already showed you guys what this what the investigation officer was saying pretty much Liberty wanted me to um send also uh my professor a copy of my assignment via the canvas portal however that was the first email that I sent my professor and I also sent my professor a copy of my assignment um another time throughout the email conversation as well now the directions that Dr Danley wanted me to follow to to reply to my classmates were incorrect and I showed you guys that in the last video but continuing on I attempted to reach um you know that person shortly after receiving the email on April ninth twenty twenty four but was unsuccessful I left a message with an assistant who informed me that she would forward my message and contact the num- contact number to him despite this I wasn't able to speak with the person um he due to that person being on another call and did not return my message I also left the voice message so I already had this right here for a while I'm gonna just read it like this now to help me and myself like you know read this better however um so long story short I pretty much go down and I break it down how their outcome was not um like valid okay so here we go so this is what that investigation officer said for discussion replies it says students are able to be able to apply as soon as there are two other students who submitted their initial response you know that he will accept your replies if you post him in discussion discussion based area or as attachment to a message sent to him within the canvas alright the within the canvas platform and I said there are several issues with this outcome one issue with this outcome is that I already post my reply in the discussion based area hence the evidence attachments I sent also in the first email I included a copy of my response sent to my professor I include a copy of my assignment for um him to review as well furthermore my response my classmate is visible when I brought this to my teacher's attention this is why he they kept changing their answer to finally being about me not using a greeting please keep in mind that this issue has nothing to um please has nothing to do with my discussion reply content but this teacher is claiming that I did not make a reply to my classmates please see the attachment approved from grade from the grade book however that shouldn't take away from the fact that the teacher asked me to submit my assignment on the day that they're due and continues to change the rules and expectations for certain students such as myself and evades the privacy of his female students of color and I said that this was another outcome of the Liberty there is no indication of which peer student replied to unless it is indicated in the post if there is no greeting present with the peers name the professor would not would have to search through each part of the discussion board and expand each student's initial discussion post to find it now see that's not my problem right because you have to go based off of the rubric and like I said if I decide to use a gender neutral pronouns such as author right that should be definitely okay because I don't know if that student wants to be called by their you know their pronoun but anyway I say this my issue with this responses that doc is that the professor mentioned that I did not complete a response to my classmates post I also realized that the instruction that the professor provided me via email regarding the situation on how to make a post my classmates response was incorrect as well the investigation after I spoke with on the phone regarding this matter as well well um I spoke with on the phone regarding that matter as well we discussed that if I followed the instructions it would have been justifiable for me to receive a score of zero because my teacher would not have seen the you know the post right um my teacher told me the the reply must be under the same students initial first post and thread only the investigation officer said that he would reach out to the my professor and provide me with this incorrect and about providing me with this incorrect information about submitting my assignments especially my professor also informed me that he helped to design the course and that he's been teaching this course for some time my evidence shows my initial response to my classmates original post under one rubric my professor gave me credit for my initial post but not my responsibility is present so what I'm saying is I followed the instructions as far as where I need to submit and they don't change from all the time I've been taking courses at Liberty University and even after cuz like I said and even in week three if you look back at the response I did this same exciting got full credit and he even says it right and again you have to go based off of the rubric and it has nothing to do with the content right it was did I respond he's indicating that I made no reply at all zero not the content okay and then right here and and not only that my teacher did single me out as far as the day to submit it cuz that's why and I already showed you guys that email right okay and then it says um this other part this is again going back to the investigation from what the investigation officer at Liberty said it said um provided me with documentation that shows he requires this of all students and courses and all other courses that he teaches provided you with what that a reg- a greeting because like I said it has to be based off of the the rubric and the ins- assignment instructions there was never an email sent out in week one that says we have to use a greeting such as hi right or we have to utilize the students particular name cuz like I said it shows in the gradebook who I um make sure I'm gonna uh I want to show you uh a picture but I wanna make sure that the students um okay so for example this is the gradebook I I sent the picture so that's my response this is the gradebook and this is just a screenshot so that kind that shows who the student is right so that's a chatroom that was a chatroom and then the gradebook is right there so you you got to chance to see that the student that I'm responding to it is in the gradebook and I already said so you can see that the gradebook showed who I was funny cuz cuz that picture that I'm covering that's a different stu- that's a different last name okay um so yeah and I and see the reason why I'm doing these things is for my safety because as we can see there has been way too many lying going on and lies being told okay and when something smells fishy and I know I'm telling the truth and I know I follow the rules and instructions I have to do these things because um it's for my safety right because I know that this man is doing some craziness and why why is this significant because this man like I said going back to um week one right let me show you guys so this is an announcement of this professor okay now this professor has all of these titles okay now let's look up what those titles are I'm gonna show you something okay so let me show you what these titles are graduate degrees that relate to religion and ministry mastery of religious education mastery of arts and you see I'm not making this stuff up that this guy is supposed to be a man of faith he has all three of these on top of a on top of um his PhD in organizational leadership right so he's supposed to supposedly a man that knows his Bible he's supposedly a man that is supposed to be a man of faith and integrity right and this is what I'm talking about okay so I I point for point for point I even broke it down even further because I already submitted a whole bunch of evidence back when I um you know had this discussion with them back in April and then she you know she wanted more information like I said I didn't need her to speak for me because I don't see what what part she advocated for me like at all okay now let me show you the the outcome of um the letter that they sent me so all she sent was like man you I told you the outcome came back on ten was it ten eleven Friday yeah ten eleven right so she sends me this at ten eleven on ten eleven at ten eleven right she sends me the um uh let's see Wednesday yeah she sends me the letter okay this is what they came now we're gonna look at this and I know you know there's that address there but I don't even live there so anyway so it says dear Ashley Marshall you guys look at this letter on April tenth the United States Department receive your complaint from Liberty University you alleged at the university discriminate against you on a basis of race of color when a professor implemented new rules for you to submit and complete assignments on March twenty nine twenty twenty four at the learning you were an African American on March twenty seven like I said his behavior changed shortly after I changed my my faith I showed my face through my uh my profile picture okay so they have that let's continue on because ORC determined that it had it that it has jurisdiction um and the complaint was timely filed so they're just pretty much like so you can pause this and read this part let's go to the facts though that they claim are facts okay wait where are the facts again okay so um oh no no this was just the letter saying that they're gonna be starting the investigation let me show you the letter that was given to me is this the letter let me see wait a second eight fourteen oh okay let me show you now this let me show you the letter that was sent to me um this last letter here it is okay 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 um it is right sorry guys okay here it is okay here goes the letter okay so here we go here goes the letter okay so again the same violations and then these are the facts okay in spring twenty uh twenty twenty four the complaint was a PhD student enrolled in advance this is the course taught by this professor as part as part of the course students were expected to submit discussion thread assignments through an online classroom platform that the professor graded discussion thread assignment in two parts including each student's initial post and the reply to the last one of their classmates initial post on March twenty seventh the compliant updated her profile on the online platform to include her photograph which showed that she's black on March twenty ninth the professor graded compliance second discussion thread assignment stating that she received partial credit because her reply can okay see this is wrong um okay consisted of a continuation of her own initial post rather than a new response to a classmates discussion thread the professor also found the complaint sorry the yeah compliant complaint complainant that replies must include a greeting identifying the classmate to whom it is addressed that same day I'm just gonna say myself my they emailed me or the compliant emailed the professor asking for more information about why her reply did not earn full credit the professor speculated that he may not have seen the compliance reply because she may have submitted her reply as a continuation of her own post the client then expressed confusion about how the reply was improper and said that she had submitted this reply the same way she submitted her posted her first discussion thread assignment which earned full credit ORC reviewed compliance replies to both discussion thread assignments and noted that she included a greeting to the climb to the customer to whom she replied in her first discussion thread assignment but did not include this in in the assignment at issue in this complaint so you see how they went off topic because number one um no I did not but also two cuz what is a greeting is it hi is it the person's name you see how that's not clear but not only that the rubric is there as a guide from the beginning you cannot grade me and the rubric does not indicate that I need to do a greeting so then when you grade me and then you tell me after that it need a greeting when there's nowhere in the rubric nor does the professor send out an email um uh indicating this and on top of that um first of all going back to she received it says the complaint okay the professor graded the compliance second discussion threat assignment stating that she received partial credit so this is actually incorrect because I received no credit for my reply I only received full credit you see how they even say that there's two times where you receive two different grades why are you stating that I received partial credit because her reply consisted I never I received zero credit because of my reply I only received full credit for my first response right but then why are you going back to week one of what I did when really you need to focus on what does the rubric say right because even if you look at his comments the directions that this professor is giving me to address um the answer is not even consistent so one his answer in as far as if you're gonna use what he's telling me to write about in his feedback where he gave me a zero stating that I did not make a reply when I submitted evidence as to who I was replying to and you can see it in the gradebook then you also need to take into account that he gave me incorrect instructions on what to write about and they did not even they failed to recognize that so that part is wrong right and the part where um and they also don't even bring out the fact that the professor again tells me to to um erase my delete my my response and wait to submit it the day that it's due which was Easter continuing on though um okay on March twenty ninth and again on March third the professor instructed the complaint to resubmit her reply to this discussion thread assignment on the online but you know okay let let me just finish this on March twenty ninth and again on March thirtieth the professor instructed the complaint to resubmit her up her reply to discussion thread assignment on the online classroom platform for regressing OCR determined that the complaint never resubmitted her reply to the online classroom platform so I already my first email and many times throughout that email um you know through the canvas I did send him that but according to the instructions that my teacher wanted me and I already shared that with my um with the investigation officer at Liberty Peter right as well as my attorney right and I just read to you the instructions that he wanted me to follow to resubmit my assignment are incorrect how can I resubmit an assignment if it's incorrect I submitted it correct the first time the issue had to do with whether my response was present or not never has to do with the content never has to do it should never have to do with whether or not I use the greeting or not cuz that's not on the rubric you have to go by the rubric cuz then you have teachers who are liars they claim to be quote unquote Christians and man of faith but they lie okay so continuing on OCR reviewed the compliance replies to remaining six discussion thread all of which should place other the complaint updated her profile with a proof and noted that all included greetings to classmates whom the complaint replied so um again what is a greeting to them right is a greeting hi author or is it not is it just hi or is it just the name because again that's not even clear right if I say author and it clearly shows which student I'm talking to again this they're arguing about something that's irrelevant because the main point was did I did I not make do this assignment and he already claimed back in the second response to my email he says in a way you're right meaning he sees that I did this I'm it but he's saying I I posted it in the wrong area and as you guys both witnessed no I did not see that's what we need to talk about all this stuff right here is so irrelevant is so irrelevant yes my final grade was an A because I shouldn't have to and I think that's sometimes like the issue people want like people who go through a lot of things cuz mind you I'm in school I'm working as a clinical therapist like I was providing services to veterans okay I'm studying five languages I'm also building my my other career and my brand and my business what else was I doing oh I was studying for the ASWB their clinical exam too and I and I also have video I also talked about them as well so um you're not going to stop me you get what I'm saying this is what's my business you know I I'm a mindset coach so of course I'm gonna set set the example you know what I'm saying for myself and like I said because I know that I'm in the right why would I be upset why would I be mad why would I be down if I know I'm doing the right things you get what I'm saying as a matter of fact you guys have gotten you guys have got exposed and I'm not gonna stop this until this has reached the national level I'm gonna continue to post I'm gonna continue to bring awareness because if he he did this he did this and you guys didn't say absolutely nothing no not on here let's continue on do you see anything where it says anything about the the um the picked him sending his former students pictures of myself or him doing background information because if if you look and I did incognito search meaning me never ever having to look at myself ever again but if I did just a a normal search of Ashley Daz Marshall a black girl doesn't I don't come up okay so somehow he had some former knowledge of me he did some digging and diving right because on my profile let me take you guys to my profile right now on my student account okay so as you guys can see this is my student account you guys this right here let's so okay let's go to the dashboard okay okay so for example this is a class that I recently took and that's not the one in question okay uh but as you guys can see um even when it comes to like my assignments and stuff like that my middle name is not posted on here like I'm trying to show you guys my my account it just my profile okay here it should be here do you guys see my middle name anywhere and I can't change I could only I can't I could I could only change this I can't change this you get what I'm saying so even if I was to say edit profile let's see if we can edit my profile you see I can change everything up here let's see titles I could I maybe I can act I can add like let's see miss let's see if I'd say miss miss let's see what that would do okay you see how your profile has been successful let's refresh and see if that made a difference so it didn't it didn't do anything that's what I'm trying to explain to you guys I don't know how this guy knew my um I don't know how this guy knows my that's Amazon I don't know how this guy knows my my middle name and that's what's freaky you know what I'm saying and I don't like that and that's why I need to make these videos because I don't know this is like I said you tell me like you tell me you know so um okay so I already showed you guys that um I showed you guys that letter and I showed you guys that okay so I think that was what I wanted that was on my agenda today um for this video right is to show you guys that so I don't know how this dude knows my my middle name I really have no idea I have no idea there's no connection between my running and Liberty University like I said those seven years ago you guys okay so you do you fit you go figure oh going back to the letter let me finish showing you the letter that's what I was doing um okay hold on one second go ahead let me cuz I want to show you guys that nowhere do they address right any of the issues regarding him sending this him sending students um him sending the students thing right okay here we go so the legal the legal um wait is this is this the letter that I wanted to look is this it um okay yeah yeah here it okay yeah yeah so that was the legal the legal thing when investigating that the allegation the when investigating an allegation of different treatment OCR first determine whether there is sufficient evidence to establish an initial see okay initial um you know discrimination specifically uh deter okay so you just you guys can here I'm gonna let you guys read that so they're pretty much what they're saying they're trying to find the facts right they're trying to see if 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 this thing this discrimination what actually occurred right so I'm saying discrimination I because I'm believing it's discrimination because I noticed there was difference in treatment once I change my picture what what are my facts well he's telling me that I need to submit on a specific day when that's not the guidelines right and I submit the proof then he's telling me I made no response when that's not the guidelines he's telling me I need a greeting okay when that's not according to the rubric right but like I said that wasn't that was his final answer after the fact because mind you in his second answer he says in a way you're right you just put it in the wrong place but that's incorrect and like I said I have evidence showing where he's giving me instructions on how to make the post and they're incorrect mind you he also told me that he wrote this curriculum and he knows um pretty much how this the the courses ran and I need to pretty much do what he says that's what this man I have those emails you guys should see his the way that he communicates okay continuing on assuming an initial so let's let's do that okay here we go so what they're pretty much saying right they're saying okay if there's discrimination namely the there they were unable to determine it um was contin- they're they're saying that my they're saying that it's not discrimination and the reason why the professor graded me was due to the content meaning it was a continuation but like I said and I mind you when I was talking to the professor I did ask for third party and that was also denied by the way okay but if you look back at what the original issue was has nothing to do with the content it's never about the content and if you look at my original answer side by side with what I wrote you will see that it's not a continuation and if you look at who I'm responding to and what I wrote you will see that I followed the instructions so and mind you the my professor's instruction that he gave me is not the instruction that were what the rubric tells us to do so these people right here did not do a great job because they're telling me I wrote a continuation and they're siding with that man who gave incorrect incorrect instructions when in fact I follow the rubric to the T they also they they're saying that found evidence indicating professor gave full cr- full credit on seven of the eight discussions of course because I always follow the instructions like I did in all of my other classes you see um the only did not did not include a greeting to customers whom she replied like I said a a reply um I didn't include a greeting in week three I did not include a greeting meaning hi he wanted me to say hi I did not include a greeting